Ms. Page.
Here.
Ms. Cosby. And, Ms. Oh. I had you. You did not have a phone right now, so you're being in the phone.
All right. So, I did get an email from, and Mr. Camrus is closeted at the General Assembly. He was waiting to testify, and there's a big crowd, and so he was unable to be here, but we have Dr. F. And I did have a couple of questions from Ms. Dorr, which I can share.
I answered those for her already via email. Unless you want to do them for the group.
We might need to contact her.
Okay. And, so, yes, Ms. Page?
So, Madam Chair, I did not submit my questions, but I do have a couple that I would like to, um...
Well, we are not going to work, uh, most people have not submitted questions on the Google Doc yet, so we're going to take those up that were difficult. Whatever gets submitted by tomorrow, I think.
Um, real quick, first, your microphones aren't, I guess, on, so it's hard to hear on the livestream, maybe?
Okay. We'll try again. Okay. So, whatever goes in the Google Docs will be the focus of our discussion on Monday, which doesn't mean you can't bring it up tonight.
Exactly.
But, just to know that we're not going to pull that list until, when are we pulling it? Monday, okay. So, you have plenty of time for anything that you have not, do not discuss tonight, or that comes to you as you're reading through this document for the 200th time, get it in the Google Doc. All right, Ms. Page? Go ahead. What's on your mind tonight?
Oh. I did like to, um, where, of course, I know this has been a question, concern in the budget, looking at transportation.
Okay.
Um, looking at how we can create full-time positions for our bus drivers that are currently working part-time, so that it's more attractive, and it creates a viable living for a person trying to make ends meet on a part-time salary.
Okay.
You know, maybe in the areas of, in the cafeteria, custodian, instructional assistant, based on the, you know, definitely have to be, you know, the qualification.
Yeah, and since this is a discussion, and there are only four of us, we can...
Is that fair?
No. Ms. Burke, we can be more informal, okay? So, Mr. Simmons, do you have a thought on that? I would say, seems to me like it would really be hard to do some of those jobs because, because of the timing, so...
Yeah, good evening.
Good evening.
The timing does make it challenging. Uh, I'd also share that even though they're on six-hour contracts, bus drivers do receive full benefits. I think that was a question of last time we discussed this.
Yes.
But bus drivers are given a chance to work additional hours doing field trips, after-school care, those sorts of things. Um, and they do help us out in the summer as custodians, helping us clean buildings and even in the cafeteria. So, those opportunities do exist, it's just that putting them at an eight-hour contract would create some tension, because you've got to find work for them to do for the full eight hours every day, which would be tough.
Right, because, like, they couldn't necessarily work in the cafeteria, because they're, they're, by the time they get, well, they certainly couldn't do breakfast, and by the time they get back for those two hours, I don't know whether they could be a cafeteria monitor before they start the afternoon run.
So, I'm hearing from some drivers that they have worked in the cafeteria, but, um, they were poured out of their position for whatever reason, and I guess the six-hour, you have to check it, um, clock out, clock in, clock out, but, um, I think it's something worth looking into to see if there are viable options, because our bus drivers, because the positions are all part-time, you know, people, we are struggling in filling those positions, and we know transportation is a huge barrier for our students, especially in the South Side, just the way, you know, the makeup of the South Side not having sidewalks, um, and the zones are so spread out. I think it's really worth looking into some other options.
I'm happy to look into it and cost it out. Um, I would share that the six-hour contract has become at least the standard in this area. Chesterfield and Herico have gone with the six-hour contracts for their drivers as well, for the same reasons that RPS did years ago. It's just tough to find time for the full eight hours for a bus driver. We do encourage bus drivers to do the additional runs for overtime and additional time, and oftentimes they do. Um, and that's a huge piece of their checks as well.
And I have another issue, but we can discuss that offline.
Okay.
About...
So, I'll go to Ms. Burke.
Transportation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Having bus drivers to work as lunch monitors has gone on for many years in the city of Richmond.
Right.
It doesn't always work well consistently, because, as you stated, if they have a field trip, or something else happens, you can't, you cannot depend upon them to serve in those positions. So, some days they show up, some days they don't. So, let's say in the dining hall, you have an assigned area, that means then the principal or the designated has to get someone else to cover. So, if that is an opportunity for them to have additional hours, I suggest that it's not in an area which we are depending upon them. And it seems like financially, they do better with the field trips or whatever else, as opposed to serving as a cafeteria monitor. It seems like the money is less, so if you have a choice, which one would you do?
Right.
So, my suggestion would be another area, but not, not for anything with the classroom or the cafeteria, which people will depend upon them being there. It causes a hardship on the staff that's there.
Understood.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, let the record be led. You've been joined by Ms. Cosby. May I have a call, so your meeting is a formal meeting?
So, now we're really formal.
Well.
We're just having a general discussion, Ms. Cosby, questions. What goes in Google Docs will be the focus of our work on Monday. So, so, everybody, we need to do our homework, get our Google Docs done, and that will be coming up on Monday. So, anything else for the good of the order? Any other questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Burke?
So, right now, Madam Chair, make sure I understand, this is, however we so desire, anything, any area?
Yes, any area.
Okay, this goes back to our conversation and that excellent article that was in Style Magazine regarding our future centers, which is an exceptional program, and this comes, this is on page 42, that I was looking at that. Um, it's nine, well, Site Function 1000, of course. Potential funding gap for transition of future centers from Education Foundation to RPS. So, from what I understand, RPS, the system now will take on the future centers, which is excellent. What my concern is, I have two concerns. Number one, I know it costs more than $75,000, so the gap being, where do we get the money to run the program overall? That's my question.
Okay. Mr. Camrus?
The lion's share of the funding for the future centers comes from the city of Richmond, and the city has agreed to pass that money directly to RPS instead of sending it to the foundation. So, um, something on the order of $300,000 and change will come from the city of Richmond. We wanted to make sure that if there was any gap between that amount and the total cost of funding the program, that we just had a bit of cushion there in the budget. The reason there might be a gap is that there are some costs that are right now borne by the foundation and not by the city, and so we're still estimating exactly how much that is, but at most, it would be $75,000. We think it'll be less, though.
May I, Madam Chair?
Yes.
So, the city will fund for so many years, or that's just for this coming year, or this, the next five years, or...
Just for this coming year for now, though we expect it to continue, the city and the council can't make any commitments to years beyond the current fiscal year. So, every year, they revisit the budget, and our expectation would be that the city continues to fund it into the future, and certainly, if they were to tell us at some point that they no longer wanted to do so, I'm quite certain we would have a bit of a discussion about that.
I'll fill it in on the Google Docs as well, so we won't forget that. Thank you so much.
Hi, Mr. Young.
Thank you.
We are postponing discussion of the Google Docs until Monday. That'll be the focus of our work on Monday. But, so, anything at all, anywhere in this wonderful document, that anybody has something they want to address this evening? Um, and we have had question about creating full-time bus drivers and transition money for future centers. Mr. Young?
First, let me apologize for being tardy. I was down the street with two of my students at a very nice little party, and stayed a little longer than I should have. I presume that a topic conversation this evening that would merit some time would pertain to a conversation that was initiated on Tuesday, on Tuesday evening at the compact, specifically when Jay Brown and the mayor advised, Mr. Superintendent, correct me if I misspeak, but that the city projects that year-over-year increase in revenue for the city would amount to approximately $18 million, but year-over-year increase in expenditures absent any changes or amendments that we may anticipate, surely from the mayor, would amount to $21 million, and the relevance to what we will be submitting to His Excellency's attention shortly. I would, so, I, so, if I may, I would, I'd welcome an opportunity to have a conversation about, specifically, if what we're going to send downstairs on February 18th, on February 18th, if, right now, in its, as it's currently constituted, bears any semblance of reality with what we can expect, I'd propose that it probably does not, we have a lot of work to do.
Anyone want to join this conversation? Mr. Barlow?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and, Mr. Young, thanks for bringing up that point. Um, you know, the way I see it, we, we did get an idea of what baselines look like for next year. I also think that we have an obligation to request, request the things that we feel that we need as a school division, first, to be as successful as possible. Um, so, I know we've sort of had this debate virtually every year since we've been on the board, but my, my hope is that we'll continue to delve into the needs that we have, and then we'll be in a position, once we have a better idea of what the budget looks like from both the state and the city formally, to pare down anything should they not fulfill our budget request.
Anyone else? Ms. Burke?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think we all are still elated with the, um, the news that the mayor gave us yesterday regarding the stormwater.
Yes.
That was awesome, that we don't have to pay that big...
Bad debt.
Debt from the past, and that we're going to move forward. I don't know where that is in the budget. It's, I know it's in here someplace, but my question is, and I'll put this on Google Docs as well, since we'll have some money left, I'm going to suggest that some of that money goes into the maintenance line. Where's Mr. Simmons? Because at the end of the year, we usually have challenges getting the stripper for the floors, and making sure we have ample toilet paper and soap and paper towels, not the whole amount, but at least, it should be about, what, $300,000 or more? Maybe about $100,000 to go towards, that would be my suggestion, so I hope my colleagues will consider that as well, since we don't have to pay that stormwater bill for this year.
With the bill, the debt.
The debt, excuse me.
Mr. Young?
Uh, yes. Never made any sense, in my opinion, for one city agency, for lack of a better description, to provide money on one hand, and then for another city agency to essentially request it right back. So, I concur with that, and $3.3 million is a lot of money. To your point, I do welcome that conversation. I hope that we can have this conversation, and maybe it's right now is the right time, because, to the Chair's point, the mayor rightfully identified that $3.3 million made no sense for us to do what had been proposed, but, but going forward, still, it is a bill of, I think Calvin Farr identified, like, five years from now was like $330,000 a year, so it is still a significant sum of money. Yours truly did introduce a proposal that aims to address some of that. I would, and I defer to my colleagues and to the Chair on this, but I do hope we can have a conversation about how we can, and the superintendent included in this budget some expenditures that I think make a lot of sense for us, relevant to not only being responsible environmental stewards, but also improving aesthetics on our campuses, planting trees, and wet swells, wet ponds, et cetera. So, I do hope we can have that, that conversation, but I, I hope we can connect the dots, and that approximately $330,000 a year that we anticipate having to spend for the purpose of stormwater, that perhaps we could instead leverage those offsets that are provided in that ordinance, in the stormwater ordinance, where 50%, if a property owner's can offset up to 50% of their cost if they do those kinds of things, like what the superintendent has proposed in his budget, i.e. planting of trees, et cetera, et cetera. So, thank you.
I will take a minute to respond a little bit. We did find out, or it was told to us, that not all of the things that are available to homeowners in our city as far as stormwater offsets are available to us or commercial establishments. So, I think drilling down further into that, I'm still trying to get them to come out and see me and talk to me about some of the things I've done to do something about my stormwater bill, but that's not a conversation for this board. But, I do think anything we do, and I'm really excited, and it was fun to see the, the stormwater giant pipes that we're putting in at the new schools, so that will, right there, we will have much smaller bills for wastewater at the new schools than we've had at the old school, so, yay. So, maybe what we might want, Mr. Young, is specific to this budget. If you could maybe make some suggestions on that Google Doc, you know, maybe these things, besides the tree planting, you know, is there something else? And this might be also, you know, you've been talking about grants, you know, may, I know Arbor, the Arbor Day Foundation does plant trees, so, you know, some of that might be possible as well. So, I look forward to hearing more from you about that. Okay? Anyone else? Ms. Cosby?
Thank you, and maybe I missed this earlier. Uh, so, on Monday, that's going to be dedicated to whatever's put on that Google Doc, but there were some things that we did ask for during past sessions, so, for example, the 3%, 4%, and 5% salary scale for teachers. Do we have that information this, this session?
We're going to have responses to everything that's been asked so far, including tonight, on Monday.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So, there's, we haven't talked at all about some of the things, the additional things at the back. Well, we did talk a little bit about it, but the additional basic needs and adjustments on page 42 and 43, and I know some of that we'll certainly be talking about then, but I don't know if there was anything in particular that you wanted to talk about with, with us tonight? Is there anything we want to talk about just as us? Yes, Mr. Barlow?
Thank you, Madam, so, just as us. I did miss one of our budget meetings, so please forgive me if this has already been discussed, but I am curious to know about the Patrick Henry subsidy, and was that something that we discussed already?
Mr. Camrus?
I was hoping to gather more information about that at our last board meeting, when Patrick Henry was scheduled to give a financial update. However, for reasons that I'm still not completely clear on, they were unable to have someone at the meeting, and so we will try to gather some information on that to provide the board with more context, so that we don't have to wait till February 18th to hear all the details on that. I don't know if Mr. Simmons has additional detail at this time, or we'd prefer, okay.
Madam Chair, let the record be led. You've been joined by Ms. Gibson.
Hi, Ms. Gibson.
Hello.
Yes, Mr. Young?
Uh, I know I saw, Superintendent, somewhere in the document, I'm trying to locate, now I saw, see tie out there, I think I remember in the document, funding relevant to the future centers and staff?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. We, it's just, the city funds it, basically, and we're, but the transition, there might be some things that the foundation has actually been doing that we might have to pick up.
Sorry for being late.
It's okay. I will say that at 5:58, I was a little concerned, but here, look at us, wonderful. And Ms. Dorr is unable to be here, Dr. Sapini is not well, and is therefore not here. Ms. Dorr did send a couple of, of things, and Ms. Yudaska responded to her, but I think it would be a good idea, if I can find it again, um, one of them was about the future centers, and, you know, what was happening to them, and, you know, that they are coming here, and we're transferring them to us, and it's a really exciting thing. And, let me see, when, when we see the individual school-level detail, she has heard from principals that they are worried about cuts to their school materials budget, and my understanding is nowhere in here are we cutting school materials budget.
And that material budget is based on, so that would be the only reason there might be fluctuation up or down.
Actually, in this budget is an extra allocation for every English learner student, so, um, schools that have a high number of such students will see an increase, but there is definitely no decrease.
Okay. Ms. Gibson, we're, everything that's going in the Google Docs and every question that have been asked so far will be addressed by the administration on Monday evening. So, this is sort of a more informal chance to chat with each other, and also, if you want to bring anything up to the group to chat about that we haven't talked about so far, or that we talked about that you want to talk about some more, this is your opportunity.
So, has the Google document been shared with the, with the public?
I don't think so. We're still, we're still filling it out.
But it should be. I think it, if this is something that everybody's been collaborating with, I believe it would need to be shared with the public. So, so, in lieu of that, it would be helpful, at least to read, so, can we get a summary of all of the things that are currently on the table to be addressed at the February 18th meeting?
Ms. Yudaska?
I think we're also talking at the February 10th meeting, not February 18th, so...
That's, that's better.
The next, yes. There's time. Um, because it's a Google Doc, it was shared with the board, there's not necessarily a public email address, but if the board wants to just share the questions that you've raised, we'll certainly type all of them up for Monday, or have responses for all of them on Monday.
And, um, okay, and Dr. Epp? Just looking at it here, there is really not, it looks as if there is just one entry from Ms. Dorr related to three or four questions. I'd be happy to read those out loud, but other than that, there is nothing else listed on here at this point.
Earlier today, there were...
All right, Ms. Page?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, since the board members are still entering, there are questions regarding the budget. I think it makes more sense to wait until everyone has had the opportunity to gather their, um, questions, and then make it available for public consumption at that time.
Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to hear from Ms. Lilly in terms of the, because if I recall, there was a prior board, there was collaboration on a Google document, and there was concern with that, that it was considered an open meeting to have that kind of collaboration within the document?
I'm not aware of that conversation. Certainly, if a board member is inputting, I don't know, because I don't have the link to the Google Docs, if you are inputting your questions on a document to compile for a later document, and you're not having conversation back and forth between, between, or among, among you, that is not a, that would not constitute a meeting, that's gathering of the information. I'm not familiar with the other incident that you're talking about, but I think that it's, it's a mechanism, would be as, I mean, it would be the same as, I was going to say, it would be the same as you emailing whomever is the collector of the information, that's not, and BCC-ing each other, that's not considered a meeting. Where it becomes tricky is when you start having conversations back and forth with each other in real time, or in close proximity, that that's an issue.
That makes sense, thank you.
And it would make sense to then compile it, and you, once that document is compiled, that's presented as an, as the attachment to the addenda, excuse me, to the agenda or whatever for that Monday. It would not need to be in parcel, bits and parcels, doled out to the public.
Yeah.
Ms. Cosby?
Uh, thank you. Okay, so, I'm going to say a couple of things, because I am going to put it on the Google Doc, but I just want to make sure it is on record, because if we don't discuss it on Monday, then we would have wasted more time. So, I just want to make sure that I have some concerns. I want to reiterate, want the attendance, the chronic absenteeism data by school. I am, you know, we talk about an alternative, alternative education, having a few more programs. I know we have a position, manager of alternative education design, to tell you, you know, I, um, we've, we've talked about this, we've talked about this for maybe three years now, and I know that maybe two years ago, we did have some type of proposal that was put on the table, that Robin, what's Robin's last name?
Dalton.
Dalton. That Robin Dalton, Angela Jones, Tracy, what's Tracy's last name?
Mason.
And Mason. Mason. So, and they worked on this proposal for an alternative ed proposal. Would like to see that come and be discussed, because while I appreciate having somebody in place to design something, we do have to move kind of quickly. We see it every time we have a disciplinary committee meeting, and we know what our issues are, and would like to see some type of funding for that come this budget cycle.
A question for you, Ms. Cosby. Now, the attendance data, do we need that for the budget? Is there, do we need to have that as we work on the budget?
Yes. On the table, there is a proposal for twenty attendance officers. So, I'm not saying I'm against that at all. I mean, you all, I was against taking it out.
Right.
I'm not saying I'm against it, but I do want the data to back it up. This is why. So, what do we look like right now? And we are in February, and, correct me if I'm wrong, I know that our accreditation is, you know, attendance is an issue, will be a consideration for accreditation. We know that attendance is a consideration for one-time graduation, if I remember correctly. So, it's important for us to see where we are now. Are we, and also, discipline. So, as we talk about, you know, we have our behavioral specialists, we might not just need six, we might need more. So, what, will we look at our disciplinary data? If we can just highlight, what are the, some of the, even if it's just high-level things, that is good for us to know as we work through this budget.
Ms. Page? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were done.
No.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay. Also, I didn't see anything in here, and maybe I overlooked it. So, if I did, tell me where it is. Regarding mentors for our teachers. So, is there anything in here? I see professional development, but do we have, there used to be a budget line item for mentors for teachers. So, you have professional development that is grades. The money goes, they go to a couple of hours, what have you, but someone who will be in that classroom and help that teacher that may be having some difficulty. Do we, can we, do we have that? How many do we have? Now, before, how it was, was that you had, like, teachers who were mentoring new teachers.
Retired teachers.
Well, not necessarily just retired teachers, but people in the school who would mentor other teachers. And I know there was some concern, because it could be, you know, the workload. I mean, that was a lot. So, what do we have now? What does it look like?
We have, we have not made changes to our mentor program since this administration arrived. We fund that. That is included. The mentor program has continued, and it is included typically in our Title II dollars.
Oh, okay.
So, when you approve that grant application, you'll see those dollars there.
Okay.
I can get you more specifics on numbers and scope.
Yes. And how it works. Yeah, I want, I mean, what is it? Because I, I'm just, my memory can be faulty.
Teachers in the building, tired people?
We have a combination.
Okay.
Yes. And I can certainly prepare a summary. I can have Dr. Curry either do a presentation, or we can prepare a summary for you.
Okay, great. And last for right now, would like some data on how many teachers we have that are considered, that have, let's say, zero to five years, and then five plus per school. What does it look like per school? I know some schools were getting better, but some schools might have more newer teachers than veteran teachers, and would like to see that breakdown.
Okay. And again, do we need that?
Yes.
For the budget?
Yeah.
Okay. Just, I know these people are gathering a lot of data. Okay. Ms. Page, and then Ms. Gibson.
Two questions. And just to pick it back off of what Ms. Cosby said about the behavioral specialists. So, we see that we have six in the budget, but I think it would be imperative that we look at, is six enough, enough, or is there support, or they need for more behavioral specialists in our schools? Because it's six, have we identified where they would be placed, Superintendent?
I would ask Dr. Epp to come up and speak to the behavior specialists, or Mr. Hughes. Could you? We can also, we can also bring it on Monday. Yes?
Okay.
We're here.
But we can stay here ten minutes?
Sure. Sure. No problem.
All right.
And then my next question about the mentoring program for our new teachers. Is there any data regarding that, like, the outcomes, how successful new teachers are, you know, like, the classroom management? Because I'm hearing a lot of concerns, new teachers, maybe some issues with classroom management, and it's really how effective the mentoring program. So, is there any data as far as outcome, success with the training, or, you know, the guidance, the mentoring program?
I can tell you, there's not a lot of clear data on that at this point, unfortunately. There are many things that we want to have data on that we just don't have at this point.
Madam Chair, because, you know, this could be an isolated situation, you just really don't know, but teachers, seasoned teachers that have been selected as mentors have very little interaction with the new teacher, new teacher, because they may have decided they don't want to participate, or be supportive in that role. So, then this information would be important as well.
You mean, the new teacher doesn't want to be part of the program?
No, the mentor, the veteran.
Doesn't want to support the new teacher?
New teacher, yes. And it's been, for, you know, little interaction with the veteran teacher and the new teacher.
If I may.
I know there is not that much data, but.
If I may, R.P.S. does not have a strong mentoring program. There are some mentors, as Dr. Epp noted, but this is not a program that I believe is robust, or from my limited exploration of it, feel that it is particularly effective. That's something that we certainly would like to tackle, but it is one of many, many, many things on the list, and unfortunately do not have capacity for that for this coming year. So, we will continue with what we have, and continue to invest in classroom management support and other supports for new teachers. It is certainly something that is on the agenda. It's just something that, in all honesty, we don't have the capacity to take on for this coming school year. A complete redo of that program. I wish we did. That's just the unfortunate reality.
So, I guess, my question, so we really don't have any data to show, to demonstrate how effective?
No, we do not.
Whether or not, what we, the program, or the plan that's in place, whether that, whether or not that's even effective.
I cannot in good faith tell you that we have any data that would speak one way or the other. And I think to effectively study that would require significant investment of resources, likely a research partner, because what you want to see is, in an ideal world, you sort of set up a control group, new teachers who have, don't have mentors, and new teachers who do have mentors, and try to study the effects and impacts. I can tell you that the literature on mentoring indicates that most mentoring programs are ineffective, largely because there's a mismatch between mentor and mentee. So, many school systems have veteran teachers mentoring, but they may not be in the same subject area, or the same grade level.
Exactly.
And so, the support they're able to provide isn't particularly helpful. There's also evidence that without very clear training as to what one should do as a mentor, it ends up being not particularly effective. Now, granted, it's always helpful to have somebody to turn to and ask for help, certainly, but in terms of fundamentally supporting teachers through their first year, it really does require significant training for the mentor, certain protocols to go through. There are organizations in the country that do this. The National Teaching Center is one. There are others. But again, that would, it's on the list, just something that, given everything else we have going on, we just have not been able to prioritize for this coming academic year.
Ms. Gibson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I just want to go through the list of things that I'm hoping to get, or I'd like to see additional information on. One, I'd like to reiterate interest in the items Ms. Cosby mentioned, including especially alternative education. And I do agree that getting that chronic absenteeism data is important to do. I'd like to see a specific proposal for addressing the shortage of substitute teachers, and including both additional pay for substitute teachers, and then also, you know, again, I've heard from lots of teachers who are, end up having to kind of piggy, fill in, you know, and use their additional time to do that. And so, I'd like to figure out how we can compensate teachers that are put in that position of having to pinch-hit, if you will. I'd like to see a proposal for A.P., the assistant principal salary decompression. And in those proposals, I think it's important to see the specific pay scales. So, seeing the pay scale for the assistant principal, also seeing the pay scale for custodians and the bus drivers, and those other roles that we are looking to make changes to. I'd like to see the proposal, the gentleman that spoke, regarding J.R.O.T.C. I'd like to see more specifics in terms of the specialty schools, the STEM program. I've mentioned this, I think, a couple of times. You know, we just need to get some ballparks in terms of what the plan is. And I think along those same lines, I would like to see, in those schools at M.L.K. and at Henderson, you know, what do we, what is the staff that we, that are, you know, that are in those schools? And so, what do we need to, you know, in addition to the staff that's there, in order to build those programs out over time? I'd like to see more specifics in terms of the transportation plan, you know, so the additional drivers. And I want to ensure, too, that in the line item for the additional drivers, and I may have misinterpreted the document, but I, it seemed like that was planned at the current salary, and so I want to make sure that that's planned for, at the increased salary that we hope to be able to do. I believe there's a line item for furniture, classroom furniture in the budget, and I'd just like to get more specifics in terms of what that was based on, you know, if we've received information from teachers, I'm sorry, from principals in terms of what their baseline needs are regarding school furniture. I also think, and again, so Ms. Cosby mentioned wanting to see teacher tenure by school. I also think it's important to see the data in terms of the number of teachers that are working with provisional licenses, as well as classes that are currently taught by long-term subs. I want to reiterate the need for additional behavioral specialists, and a reach goal that I recognize we may not be able to consider this year, because we've got lots on our plate. But I do think, you know, as we're looking and considering special education, which we haven't really talked about that much, is, you know, those students that fall in the middle. So, we have, you know, students that are pulled out, and they're in a special education classroom, but then there's also those students that perhaps, you know, high-functioning autism students that are struggling in a general education classroom, but are not necessarily a right fit for a special education classroom. And so, how can we best support those students to ensure that we're able to meet their needs as well? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barlow?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I've got a handful of things here as well. Ms. Gibson brought up a couple, a couple that I had highlighted here. I also want to hear more about the junior R.D.C. funding issue. Substitute teacher question, I think, is one that we've been wrestling with for quite some time. I did see that another local school division is going to be hiring full-time substitutes, so I'm curious to know whether that could be something that we would consider, or if that would make sense. The other things that I wanted to get some clarification on are the additional K-three teachers and instructional assistants. I'm really excited to see that line item in particular, but I'm curious to know which schools they're going to. It seems to me virtually, any principal I've spoken with has expressed some need, or some desire for additional instructional assistance. So, that would be helpful. I'm also curious to know a little bit more about the position related to the management of the M.O.U. relationship with the VDOE. I saw a line item for a position there. I'd like to hear a little bit more about the executive director position for operations. And then, a couple, few more here, and I'll send these on the Google Doc, so you don't have to madly type them all down. But the C.I., I see the C.I.P. budget includes two line items for H.V.A.C. at Carver Elementary, and they happen to be the same exact amount, which is over a quarter million dollars. So, I am curious to know whether that, there are two equally sized projects of that magnitude at Carver, or if, or if there may be some duplication there. I did see a line item for increased pay for system operators, SISOPS folks. I know we talked about that in the past, and we've definitely talked about it in last, in past budget cycles. So, I would like to know a little bit more about whether we feel that we're adequately staffed there, because I know that in past budget years, there's been a substantial ask for SISOPS folks. And then, I've got a couple of, I've got some issues specific to a couple of the elementary schools that I represent that I'll submit via the Google Doc, but be prepared for a question about an A.P. role at Carver, and a question about how we're going to provide support at Fox in particular, given that we have a substantially higher percentage of students with, of economically disadvantaged students, and I want to make sure that they're, they're getting all the services that they need as they come into Fox.
Okay. I'm going to go back and shoot to find my next person. That would be Ms. Burke.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The list that we've submitted thus far is excellent. All of our needs are there. It's not really a list of dreams. Everything that's been listed does need to be addressed. What my concern is, I have one concern, and then one question. At some point, thinking upon past experience... At some point, thinking upon past experiences, we may have to cut back on something in order to get something else that we want. And right now, this is extensive and it all does need to be addressed. We may not get it all this year, maybe next year, a little bit more and a little bit more. So I just hope that we have in the back of our minds what needs, everything needs to be done. But everything may not get done this particular upcoming school year. But we need the pay increases, we need the JRTC persons to be addressed. We need the sys operators, we need the attendance persons. I just hope that also we are mindful of what we must have now and what we may need to defer. My question is, I'm thinking about all the grant money, and we don't have to have this for Monday's meeting. But in regards to the... Is it okay?
I'm sorry.
In regards to Title I, Title IV, Title II, Title IX. At some point, I know we get money from all of those different grants, federal money, in order to get certain services, just as it was just stated regarding the mentor teachers, which that's been a program that needed to have been addressed over the years. There's just never been enough money to cover as it should. And we have so many teachers with less than three to five years of experience. So it's also, under that little budget, it's almost been impossible to address each teacher's needs based upon that. And I'm thinking about previously, and I don't know whether this program is still in place. Let's say we had five retired people that would go from school to school, but you may not get that support for once or twice a month. So that's, that's how effective is that? So what my, my question is, number one, to think in terms of, as we put our list in place, and assuming that all of us have five or six things we're going to list, what must we have now and what must, because a decision will be made on the 18th, correct? So when we discuss on the 10th, that's going to be a robust discussion.
Yes, although our final budget will be based on what the mayor and city council tell us is our final budget. At which point, if we, at that point, we may have to make additional decisions.
Right. But my question is also, because some things overlap at some point with the title programs, just the ballpark figure, what covers for new teachers? What covers professional development? What covers for guest teachers slash substitutes?
Okay, so what's covered with Fed funds?
With federal funds, because there are about four different title grants, is that correct?
I think that's right.
Because a lot of it does overlap into what, I'm just thinking about, having been a principal, if it didn't have with general funds, then I would go to my title but budget and pull that. If I didn't have the money in one fund to pay for professional development, then I would go over to the federal Title I budget and pull for that, for federal, for professional development. So just so that we are, it's a lot of overlap there. But it would be nice just to know what the overall figures are and what it covers. That's what I'm asking. Is that asking too much for Monday? I mean, you have a lot of this.
We can give a general...
Just an abbreviated version, so that we won't ask for the same things twice.
So Mr. Young, then Ms. Gibson, then Ms. Page.
You know, at the risk of scaring Cheryl, I've conveyed to her before that we often think alike. It happens really frequently. All I can say is hear, hear. You said that much more artfully than I did. And specifically, I hope that we are realist about what we can anticipate in a couple of months or in a few months. And to that end, I'm going to say what you said a little differently. And if I am describing anything I'm going to say to you, please correct me if I'm wrong. But I do think that it would be in our best interest to, for lack of better description, prioritize what is, what is a must-have for 2021. And I think we could do that all different kinds of ways. Liz's last meeting proposed a process, pertinent inquiries, reductions, increases. To Cheryl's point, I, you know, I think, you know, I'd like to propose for consideration that something akin to red light or green light, yellow light, red light, to identify those priorities, because, you know, you know, make, you know, beat that dead horse one more time. I think it's highly unlikely that we can anticipate a $21 million increase year over year from the city. So whether it's now or it's in April slash May, we're going to be back at this. And it seems to me to be incumbent on us now, given we have a longer runway, to start thinking about what those priorities are. I'm not naive to the fact that likely some of the things I am proposing for a reduction will be included in what we send downstairs on the February 18th. But at least to Ms. Burke's point, if we think about what those priorities are, we will have done a lot of the due diligence pertinent to April or May when we're back at it. That'd be my two cents. And I hope I didn't say anything that jeopardized us being on the same page. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Gibson, then Ms. Page, then Mr. Barlow.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, yeah, I also wanted to, kind of speaking both to the prioritization piece, which, you know, I do think our focus now needs to make sure that we are getting a comprehensive, you know, understanding of what our needs are. And that, and I do think that we can, prior to getting the, you know, so we can submit our needs, and then I think we can immediately begin the conversation of prioritization even prior to getting the, you know, finding out what the final dollar number is from the city. I don't know that, you know, and that's happened in the past too. You know, the superintendent has submitted a statement of needs, and that has continued to adjust, you know, up to, you know, throughout the first couple of quarters of the year. So I do think that, you know, we should look at that. But I, I think it is really critical what, that we know right now is what the mandates are. Because this is based, you know, what are the things that we have absolutely no choice about? And then, you know, so we know where the wiggle room is. So I think it is critical that those are flagged. And my, and my hope is too, so next year when we're working on the budget, let's make sure that those things are called out. And another thing is, we've been talking a little bit about grants. I think if we can also flag any items that are one-time expenses, you know, like the bookmobile comes to mind. You know, those might be opportunities for grant, you know, for trying to find grants. You know, I'm, I believe that public schools should be funded by public dollars. And so I want to make sure that those year-over-year things that we are doing come from, you know, come from the public. But I do think that where the opportunity is to use private dollars are the things that are those, you know, those one-time things that we're not dependent on next year if those private groups aren't able to continue to fulfill that need.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Page?
I was just going to add, I think it's important that we do get, we get the information about the overlaps with the title, the title funds. Because just like in some areas, we have line items and I don't have it in front of me. But like family engagement, I know Title I, there are some, a percentage of that grant goes toward family engagement. Because I know like for PTA, that's something that can help them when they are trying to increase parental involvement. But I think that'll be key in prioritization. It's definitely a must, because we all know, as in the past, we going through this exercise now. But after we approve the budget and we see what the city, on the city side, the city funding, we'll be back at this again. So prioritization is important. But also I want to add to it, the nurses. I want to highlight that. So the line item that we have for additional nurses, and I think increased, would that number accommodate each of our schools to have a full-time nurse? Or we still be sharing nurses? And are these, is this for RNs, LPNs?
Okay. Mr. Barlow, then Ms. Cosby.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I actually raised my hand to, to express my opinion about how to move forward with respect to that discussion about prioritization. I think Ms. Gibson's approach was more heartfully put than what I had for you. So ultimately, I agree that we should move forward with, with our full, full assessment of our needs and then work to prioritize even shortly thereafter this admission. I am a little sensitive to the idea, one, of whether we could even pull it off by the 18th, a prioritization of all these things. And the other of suggesting there's some sort of à la carte approach, approach that we could expect folks on the city level to fund. I do think that when we have an idea of what the funds look like, we are going to have to have more in-depth discussions about it a little bit differently than probably we did last year, given that the budget was fully funded. Because of that, some of that prioritization work was done on the front end. And then I think we all realistically know our needs were not fully funded by virtue of the fact that we had to make some of those prioritizations on the, on the front end.
Okay. So I'm just making sure I've got this straight. And because I like this idea, that after we submit the superintendent's budget to the mayor and before we get it back, we have conversations about budget priorities. Is that sounding right to everybody? Because that's agenda setting. That's agenda setting. So I want to be sure I'm understanding that we need to build in, going forward this spring, discussions about the really firm things besides the mandates, but the things that we most must have. Okay, gotcha. Thank you, Mr. Barlow. Ms. Cosby, and then Mr. Young.
Thank you. I do have a question. So February 18th is the drop date, or do we have wiggle room with that? We have wiggle room? Okay, Jonathan says we have wiggle room, so.
No, we don't. Because we have to have it to the mayor by the end of the month? I don't know how many meetings you're looking forward to, Mr. Young. How many meetings are you looking forward to, Ms. Cosby? But if we can please try and get this done without any one more meeting, I would deeply appreciate that. So let's try. Okay, let's try.
Yes, let's try, absolutely. However, I will just say this, you know, so we're going to do is, February 10th is going to be, is, Ms. Burke put it, a robust meeting, a lot of stuff being discussed.
Yeah, because we've got the two nights, Monday and Tuesday.
What's Tuesday?
We have, we have budget meetings on Monday, Tuesday, and then Thursday next week.
We have it Thursday. It's still, anyway, I just want to...
We don't have Thursday? I got that wrong. No, Thursday, it's Monday, Monday, Tuesday, and Tuesday. I guess I have my Ts mixed up. Monday, Tuesday.
I just, I'm just throwing it out there, because I do think that has to be a realistic consideration.
Okay. We'll work hard.
And I think we do with this particular budget that we, you know, we've also talked about looking at some things that are not necessarily mentioned in this document, but if there are other programmatic things that we like to look at that may be working well or may not be working well, that we can repurpose funds. I would tell you in terms of prioritization, I'm kind of looking at this through, as we go through these documents, and we see a lot of positions here that seem to be your central office positions or your, you know, do you want to look at how many of those we have? And also compare it to some of the school-based needs that we know we have to fulfill that we have not addressed. And I think it's very critical that we get this information. And I know there's been some hesitancy and like, oh my God, one more thing added to the list. But this helps us tell our story, because just putting positions down here without the data to dock, to back it up, we, it's not compelling to me, you know. So, and therefore we cannot, realistically, I think, just sell it to someone else, because that's what we have to do with this budget. And I know we keep saying that, you know, we were fully funded, and I will say it again and again, yes, we got 18 million, but we also cut 11. And we are seeing the impact. And so we want to be able to say, you know what, we tried it. Yes, we cut these things and it didn't work. These were our numbers before, these are our numbers now. We need these positions. So, and when we talk about substitute teachers, also what is our, like, do we have data on how many substitute teachers per day we have need of? And are we able to fill these needs? And with other school districts, are, what is it, what is the rate? Is it 10.50? Is it 10.50 an hour for substitute teachers? What is the rate?
I thought it was like $50 a day or something.
I'd have to check.
If we, yeah, what is the current rate? Right. And then, and what other school divisions? And the difference between, okay, so if I'm a substitute teacher, it's a one office this day versus if I'm a long-term substitute, what is the rate? Because I don't know, I don't know the rate. There's a difference, right? But what is it?
Because when they're long-term, they have to do less in plans and...
Exactly.
Oh, go to committee meetings.
Exactly.
Okay. Mr. Young, and then Ms. Gibson.
Okay, so either I'm rubbing off on my colleagues or they're rubbing off on me. But I just wanted to say, hear, hear, in regards to what Felicia said a moment ago, relevant to downtown vis-à-vis persons in the buildings. So that's first, so yes. And, and second, you were, I think, kind of, Madam Chair, soliciting consensus, looking around the room a moment ago, pertinent subject of prioritization. And for what it's worth, I feel like I'm batting 50/50. So I'm really pleased with prioritization. I think it's backwards to do it subsequent to what we will agree to on the 18th. So I just needed to say that, but, but I'm pleased that all in all with the idea that we're going to prioritize. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Gibson, then Ms. Burke.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just a couple of things. One, again, piggybacking on the central office positions. I think I would like to see, because I know we've talked a lot about the public about reducing at central office, so just to, so that the public can see, let's put together a list that has the number of central office positions that are making, you know, over a three-figure salary currently. Let's look at it, let's also show what it was before. And then let's show what it is proposed to be in this budget. And I think that will tell, you know, a pretty accurate picture, so that, you know, we're living true to that. Yeah. Specifically, oh yeah, you know what I mean, three in the front, the front three. We don't think about this, we don't think about the last three so much. And then one other thing is nurses. And we didn't, I know that there are, there are issues and there are challenges in recruiting nurses, but, but I think we would be, like, let's just find, let's just get a temperature on where we are and what we would need in terms of ensuring that we have...
of where we are and what we would need in terms of ensuring that we have nurses in every school. Because, you know, from a liability standpoint, that does concern me. And so I, I think we should, at the very least, investigate what that cost is.
Thank you, Ms. Burke.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to reiterate what, um, Mr. Barlow suggested earlier regarding hiring substitutes as everyday positions, maybe without benefits. It does make a difference. A lot of schools, I don't know whether they still do this, but, um, a lot of schools would have the substitutes they would depend upon. And especially if you were a substitute that liked a particular school and the school was very comfortable in having you there. Oftentimes those substitutes would call in, do you have a job for me today? But it, it does make, I totally agree, that's something to look at in terms of, um, having a person or two at each school to be there, to be there. It's assigned to that, to the school system and report to a particular school, which means that school will be responsible for submitting the pay and hours no matter where you are. But that, that idea is, is excellent. So I do, I'm going to list that on my Google, please, to suggest. Because there is a shortage of substitutes. Some time ago, the salary was lessened. At one time, Richmond paid more. I don't know where we are right now, but it dropped tremendously. So a lot of persons went up to other counties or other places or applied for other jobs. But we have a lot of people with degrees that don't mind substituting who are great guests. We used to call them guest teachers. You know, substitute, you treat it as a substitute. But if you're a guest teacher, it, it lifts you up. The children see it as a little bit of, better lift up. But if we have the same persons that also we think of children with special needs that have guest teachers, a lot of children challenge, have challenges with that because of today having this personality, tomorrow having another personality if the teacher's out two or three days because of being ill. So, but if you have a person there that knows the child, knows the culture of the school, knows who's whom, that will also cut back on the disciplinary steps. And I get a lot of calls from, from parents regarding, um, my child didn't do well today, but he, he had a substitute and the substitute didn't know him. So, but the child has special needs. So I hope that's something that we can consider. My other question is, being on the realistic side, going back to what John and Mr. Young said regarding, um, the persons that, um, I'm not saying this as I had planned. Anyway, social workers and psychologists, being realistic, there is a shortage. I was just in a meeting with Ed Von Secours. There's a shortage throughout the state of Virginia. As we stated earlier, if things pass as the governor has submitted, we're not the only system looking for social workers and psychologists. But there is, in the city of New York, there's a psychologist on every corner. Here in the state of Virginia, especially for children, that it's a shortage. So I do hope that we consider salary-wise, um, or some type of compensation to make, not to make, but to encourage those persons at least to get their careers started here. Because we're not the only system looking for social workers and psychologists. And more young children now are dealing with trauma. More young children now are dealing with mental challenges. More young children now are dealing in situations and they are mis, um, yeah, I wanted to use another word, but they are misdiagnosed. They are misdiagnosed, not by us per se, but it comes down to the shortage of specialists. So we may be in a tight place again when we talk about what do we prioritize? What do we defer? How do we get the top of the list to meet our children's needs? Because I don't care what your zip code is or what your, or where you live. We all have, um, periods of, of dealing with things mentally, but we as adults may cope better. So, um, I just hope when we put this together that we're mindful of not being misers when it comes to looking at the compensations or the salaries of social workers, psychologists and behavior workers, behavior specialists. Thank you.
Thank you. I will just say before I go to Ms. Page, if they're full-time employees, they must have benefits.
May I ask, you're talking about substitutes?
Yeah. Yeah, that's one of the reasons why a lot of places, when that came out, cut back hours on instructional assistants, library assistants, who used to be full-time or close to it. When they were required to have benefits at a certain number of hours per week, they cut their hours instead of giving them the benefits.
Well, if I may add to that, the salary of instructional specialist is so low. So they, I think a perk for a lot of persons working in those positions, number one, either they're working towards a, a full degree beyond the 60 hours, which is at one time, we did have programs to help them become degreed to be able to come back into the classrooms and teach fully degree. So maybe that's a partnership we can look at with one of the universities in the area. But if that means that we have to, we have to do what we have to do because it's a difference. There's a difference when you especially have children in grades pre-K through.
I know, I just was saying.
Yeah, so, um, we do need instructional special, excuse me, instructional assistance, but they, they need to be compensated as well. And encouraged to go back to school and get fully certified. So that's another on the dream plan, but it's reality because people are not becoming teachers now. We talk about teachers of color, we talk about teachers that speak several different languages. We talk about teachers having experiences or background in trauma and childhood development extensively, and then we need to pay them what's due.
Thank you. Ms. Page?
I would support that initiative for the administration to look into the substitute teachers, um, because our neighboring county, Chesterfield, they have substitute teachers listed on a teacher's contract. And it does make a difference in a school when you have the stability, when children, their familiarity, um, children, it's a difference. Because then sometimes outside of schools, they don't experience the stability, but they look for that stability in schools. So, yeah, I think that's worth looking into. And those substitute teachers may eventually become teachers, certified teachers. And also just wanna support, um, the support of social workers, psychologists, as well as school counselors because we know that's a need. And, and we, we struggle in that area.
Okay. Thank you. Are we gonna get out early? Is that the consensus of the board? Hey, Mr. Hughes, did you find that? Okay. I almost forgot that part. Do that and then we'll, then we'll. Okay. No, we're not taking action tonight. All right, Mr. Hughes, I'm sorry.
No problem. Well, good evening, Madam Chair Owen. School board members, superintendent cameras, Ms. Cosby. I wanted to take, to take the opportunity to answer, respond to the questions you had about our behavior specialists. Okay, so right now, we have six behavior specialists across non-elementary schools. We selected these schools based on historical discipline data as well as special education referrals. We have half-time behavior specialists, or behavior specialists are split between the following schools. Half-time at Fairfield Court, half-time at Over.
Now, when you say half-time, what's a half?
They mean they are there two and a half days of a full week. Okay. We have half-time at Fairfield Court, half-time at Overby Shepherd, half-time at Blackwell, half-time at Carver, half-time at Chimborazo, half-time at Oak Grove, full-time at Woodville, full-time at George Mason, and full-time at Broad Rock. Last year, those six behavior specialists case managed 114 students.
Oh, piece.
No, to, in total. I wish. We get a lot of bang for the buck then. No, I'm sorry. 114 students across those non-elementary schools. Our preliminary, preliminary glance of our data appears that we did significantly reduce disciplinary referrals and suspensions among those 114 students. But before I officially report out any numbers, I would just like to take the time to interrogate the data, examine it a little bit more closely just to make sure these numbers are accurate.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, Ms. Burke? I thought we said we were gonna adjourn. No? I'm sorry. All right. Yes, Ms. Cosby, then Ms. Burke.
I just had a question of Mr. Hughes. So behavior specialists are only in elementary schools?
That's correct. Right now, we only have six behavior specialists.
But we're asking for?
We're actually asking for the six behavior specialists back. So these behavior specialists are paid out of CEIS funds, which stands for Coordinated Early Intervention Services. And we want these behavior specialists, when they are paid for through those funds, they have a very limited scope of work. So technically, they're only supposed to work with a small number of Tier Two students to prevent them from being referred, to prevent these students from being referred into the special education pipeline. However, by paying for these behavior specialists ourselves, we have the opportunity to serve a wider range, a greater number of students, and increase the behavior specialist influence over these children.
And the reason I was asking is because I'm sure middle and high school students.
I know.
Absolutely.
So is, is that included on our budget piece? Because, um, when, at the behavior hearings that we have, disciplinary hearings, it's usually middle and high. Yeah, but it's not in elementary school. You know, it just didn't start when they got in middle and high school. So, and if they're making a difference at the elementary level, which you really need more than that. So to me, that would be a priority. So, but we do need them at Armstrong. We do need them at MLP.
You're not gonna get any type of argument from me.
Michelle?
So we just, I'm just asking for some advice from you, having spearheaded that program or continued that program. What can we do on our end to better support that program? It sounds like you need six more. Or you need 12 full-time. Ask for it. That's what I'm saying, put it all out there and then we'll go back and.
And that's why I asked the question. Right, is six enough?
To, to look at where we are with the, you know, elementary, middle, and high. And although I, I, I appreciate the gains that have been made, but if we look at just anecdotally what we're seeing in, in the disciplinary committees, we are seeing some of these, some disciplinary issues that, 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 um, that are, um, extreme enough to come before the board. We're seeing a lot more at the elementary level. There used to be a program that would help our students at the elementary, Baby RAP. That we no longer have. Baby RAP. Yes. That would address some of the issues that we are seeing at the, that we're seeing at the elementary level that come before the disciplinary committee. And that's just anecdotally, that's not looking at the, the disciplinary data that, that I think would really help us.
Yes, Ms. Burke.
Going back to Baby RAP days, and I know it stood for something. We called it Baby RAP. Something to think about because it was a program similar to, what's the program at?
ACDC?
RAS. And it's amazing when you have small groups with the psychologist, the social worker, small groups, the children flourish. They did better. And, but they had to be removed from that big school setting and go into that program, which means then you didn't deal with, with as many suspensions because there was someone there. So that may be to the point of not, we have to be very careful with that because we don't want that to be a, but I'm just thinking a lot of children who are in high school now, they had that support early on, then they may not, would need to be in those other programs. RAS or whatever. So that is, that, we may need to pull out that old data and look at that.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Uh, and you all, oh, Mr. Young.
I just had a question, I just had a question relying on Ms. Burke's experience. Do you recall how many students participated? Do you have an idea?
Yeah, I'm thinking, because I had quite a few. I think a couple of hundred, don't you think, Felicia? Or near that? They had, they had, the person, the lead teacher was not called a principal, but was a role of a principal. And you didn't have to stay there a whole year. Maybe you stayed there a semester depending upon your infraction. Now, Tim, once the students went, usually they didn't go back. But the support was there. And it was beyond school hour times. And the parents, once, sometimes parents didn't want their children to be in that program or once they visited and saw the support, then they were in agreement. And usually they came back to school and they would pass the SOLs. But it was a big number, especially from South Side and the East End.
Thank you, Madam Chair Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Before I send you all away, you have reminded me that if Dr. Sapini is ill, I need somebody besides Ms. Cosby to come tomorrow. I know. Ms. Cosby, I'm smiling at you because I know you're coming already.
I, I know Dr. Sapini did say that's why he was resting up.
Okay. Okay, all right, then, then we'll be all right. I won't have to be sending out, you know, the Mounties. Or even the, you know, the St. Bernard.